Viewing certainly. Okay, sorry, I think that was me, pardon me. Approving maps and plans for the establishment or relocation of highway and building lines, and reviewing proposed zoning regulations or changes in zoning boundaries. As you will find throughout your time on the commission, the main, your main function will be the review of subdivision and re-subdivision applications. Now, a subdivision is a statutory, a statutorily defined term in Connecticut that cannot be strayed from. And in part, a subdivision is the division of a tract or parcel of land into three or more parks or lots. Again, the division has to be into three or more lots. Connecticut subscribes to the free cut theory of planning where, while a lot is divided in half into two lots, that is not considered a subdivision. A subdivision is anything, three lots or more. Re-subdivision, as you can probably gather, happens only with property that has been previously subdivided. That is defined as a change in a map of an approved or recorded subdivision. If that change affects any street layout, affects any areas reserved for public use, or diminishes the size of a lot, or creates an additional building lot. One of your duties is also to review certain specified municipal improvements before they can be acted on by the town. Most of the time, for, for your purposes, that will deal with the location improvement, acquisition of land, or abandonment, sale, or lease of any municipally owned property or public building. The most recent one that everybody's probably aware of is the Public Safety Building. Now, in order to kind of go through what's involved in the process, especially for new members, we generally refer and walk you through an application from, from start to finish. So, the submission of the application to the Land Use Department and to Mr. Gachal starts a statutory time clock running for the agency to process the application. And it's, it's very important to adhere to the timelines for reasons we'll go into. The date of submission of the application is generally, is generally found as the next scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting of this commission. From that date, the following timelines kick in. From the date of submission, there is 65 days within which to open the public hearing. Once the public hearing is open, it has to be concluded within 35 days. And within 65 days after the close of the public hearing, you have to render your decision. Now, these timelines can be extended for a total of up to 65 days, but only the applicant can grant an extension. The, this, this commission cannot grant an extension. You can request an extension, and most times we've found that applicants and their attorneys are very, very cooperative in granting those, but the, the extension has to come from the applicant. As I noted, it's very important to adhere to these timelines because if you do not render your decision within that 65 days after the close of the public hearing, then the application is considered to be approved. That's a concept known as inferred approval, which basically means the failure to act automatically approves that application. There are certain instances when that timeframe is kicked back. For your purposes, it's mostly if there is also an application pending in front of the Inland Wetlands Agency. If that's the case, the statute requires you to delay your decision until the Wetlands Agency has submitted their report. Now, public hearings are often part of an application. But in terms of the applications you will normally see for subdivision or re-subdivision, there's a little bit of a difference. A public hearing is not required by statute for a subdivision application. You can hold one if this commission decides that the specific circumstances surrounding a particular application require a public hearing. A public hearing is required for a re-subdivision. Now, for those of you who have not been through the public hearing process, that's held, I mean, under, under normal circumstances in, in the big room at Town Hall. The applicant and their representatives, who are usually attorneys, engineers, they present their application via testimony and the submission of exhibits in the forms of documents, maps, reports, and things of that nature. Traditionally, we have the applicant go first since it is their application. At a public hearing, members of the public can speak either for, against, or sometimes neutral to the application. And, and anyone who was opposed is also allowed to address the commission. Any member of the public can submit information as exhibits. The applicant then goes last and has the last say again. They go first, they go last, it is their application. You do have the right as a commission to question the applicants and their representatives during the course of the public hearing. Now, these hearings are not governed by rules of evidence, they are not judicial proceedings. It's generally very lenient on what evidence is allowed into the record. And frankly, in the 13 or 14 years I've been representing the town, I don't believe we have ever kept any evidence out of a record for any land use application. The main purpose of the hearing is two or threefold. First is to allow the applicant to present their application in the manner that they see fit, to allow you to question them, and frankly, to gather evidence and to create a record. The overriding concept with all of this is fundamental fairness, which is also referred to as procedural due process. We want to make sure that the applicant and anyone else within reason has, has the right to be heard on a particular application. Now, there are instances when a member of a board or commission should recuse themselves. The two basic instances of those, pardon me, are either predetermination or bias when someone comes into an application for whatever reason, or comes into a matter for whatever reason with their mind so made up that there is no chance that they can judge the application fairly. Now, that's, I would think, pretty rare, and that's also something that is more on the individual commissioner to be frank, and forthcoming with. The other is if there's a conflict of interest, that can be either personal or financial. For example, a commission member could have a relationship with an applicant that could potentially impact their judgment. Or oftentimes, not oftentimes, but sometimes, a commission member could have a financial interest in the outcome as well. In those cases, we have and will continue to always say that we, we err on the side of caution. And if there is the potential for some kind of bias or predetermination or conflict of interest, we strongly recommend that the commission member recuse themselves. We want to avoid the appearance of any impropriety. Now, once the public hearing is closed, again, you have 65 days within, within which to make your decision. We always have, and I know Mr. Gachal has always been very good at this in encouraging a thorough review of the application and having discussion and debate before reaching your decision. Now, just because the public hearing is closed, the discussion and debate and decision making process is still conducted on the record. You can consider only evidence that has been submitted into the record at the public hearing. This is very, very crucial. It is, it is a basic tenet of land use law. If you refer during your decision making or debate process to information that is not in the public record, it can call the entire process and your decision into question. Your decisions are also, as a land use agency, subject to appeal to the Superior Court. So, it is important that you state the reasons for your decision on the record. We in Eastlime have a practice, and Mr. Gachal is very good at this in, in concert with us in terms of coming up with detailed resolutions that specifically set out the reasons the reasons for a particular decision on behalf of the commission. On review, if any of your decisions are appealed, they are subject to what is known as substantial evidence. What that means is if the court finds that there is substantial evidence in the record to support even one of the reasons for your decision, will be upheld on appeal. There's a whole lot else that goes into that, but it's certainly not worth getting into just for an overview like this. When you're acting on a subdivision or re-subdivision application, you have three options. You can approve it, you can approve it with modifications, or you can disapprove. That's, those, those are, those are your options in terms of acting on an application. And again, you have to make sure you do so within the 65 days, and we do keep a very good time, we do keep a very good handle on that. Because if you don't, the application can be considered approved. Now, one thing, especially folks who are new to public service may not understand is that as a member of a municipal board, you fall under the definition of a public agency for purposes of the Freedom of Information Act. You are subject to FOI requests. There are two basic purposes of FOI, and I do believe you might have had or will have an introductory with this with Mr. Hennig of the Freedom of Information Commission. The two basic purposes of FOI are to allow public access, or access, pardon me, to public records and ensure that there are open public meetings. Public record is considered information relating to the conduct of the public's business that is prepared, owned, used, received, or retained by a public agency. And in terms of records, the basic premise is that everything in Town Hall and every document that this commission generates is considered a public record and is subject to being disclosed, subject to certain exemptions or exceptions. Now, documents also include electronic communications. That includes texts, emails, IMs, and whatever other social media is out there, how people communicate, that I would frankly, have no idea. But the point is, it's important to keep private and public separate and try not to use your own private devices for public work. We try to discourage group texts or emails that discuss substantive agency related business. If you use a group email or a group text, we highly recommend that that's only for scheduling purposes, but that it does not get into any substance that should properly be the subject of an open meeting. Now, there are certain matters that can be discussed without members of the public present. Though, that is known as executive session. There are several bases for meeting in executive session. For the most part, the main one that applies to land use agencies is pending litigation. That is, if a decision of yours is up on appeal, myself or other attorneys with the Town Attorney's Office can advise you of the status and discuss that matter in executive session without members of the public. So, again, that's a short little overview of what your duties and obligations are as a member of the Planning Commission. If you have any questions, I will be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you so much. This is a good refresher, and I'm sure new information as well. I'm always picking up something new each time you go through this with us, I really appreciate it. Would love to open the floor for questions, and don't feel you need to wait for me, just go ahead and unmute and ask away. Wow, I guess it was so thorough. I don't think we're all frozen. Last call for questions? No? Okay, well, thank you so very much for your time tonight.
My pleasure. Look forward to seeing you again, take care, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Around this time of year, sometimes Gary and Jen will also send us information on training that the Connecticut Bar Association offers through Yukon Clear, I believe. And I think in post pandemic times, that's now all available online, so maybe we can get that out to members between now and the next meeting, super helpful if you're new, and if you're not new. It, you really pick up something different each time.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that, I'm not sure when they're hosting their next event. But it is coming up usually in the spring.
Great. Diving back into the agenda under reports, do we have any communications tonight?
I have none.
And zoning representative, Jen Linda was able to send out a schedule, so hopefully everyone had a chance to open that up and take a look. If you need to switch, we can figure that out. I know that the February 3rd meeting was canceled, so we didn't need to have anyone at that. Any conversation on the zoning representative's schedule? Go ahead, Olivia.
So, I just had a question about it. I was looking at the schedule, and it says September 1st was the zoning meeting, but then when I looked on the website, it said September 7th. So, I wasn't sure which one it is.
Okay.
Okay, that'll be September 1st, it should be a Thursday. The zoning commission meets the first and third Thursday of every month.
Okay, perfect.
So.
Jason, go for it.
Hey, I can't make either of the dates that I am scheduled for. So, I'm hoping to change. So, March 3rd and August 4th.
Would anyone like to volunteer to take either or both of those dates?
I'll take March 3rd, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, so Brian, I can't switch to the 3rd, could I take yours on the 16th of June?
It doesn't matter. If you, if you want to swap, I'll just do it.
Okay.
I'll take it for you, Jason, you do, you do too much as it is.
Thanks, Brian. All right.
Tim, I saw you pop off mute.
Yeah, if you want, I can switch with your, you said that was August 4th?
August 4th is the other one, yes.
If you want to trade for my October 20, that'll work.
All right, I'll do that, thank you.
Love the teamwork here, thank you all. I took notes on that, and we'll see if we can get a revised schedule back out to this group. Thank you very much. Okay, Ex officio reports, Mr. Weber's not able to be with us today, they are having a Board of Selectmen meeting as well. Planning Director, Mr. Gachal, what do you have for us tonight?
I don't have a whole lot, other than what's already on the agenda regarding Affordable Housing Plan. But just to brief you on that, we did send out the RFP, so that's now been made public. So, we'll wait, anxiously await responses. So, hopefully, we can get underway with that. At the, what we will need to do, though, is adopt a schedule. If we're gonna hold and have a subcommittee meeting, or a full blown subcommittee, so I know that question kind of came up. So, we need to kind of address that. When they'll meet, with that committee will be comprised of, and who. And once they can get going, they'll just take it from there. So, I, I think we had discussed, I think there was a couple of people who were interested in participating. We did reach out, I did send an email out to Tom and Nicole if they had interest in participating. They're more than welcome to attend meetings. I think we just need to really get down a calendar, when, when the, the subcommittee would like to meet. I know we're doing a special meeting in two weeks with the POCD Subcommittee. That said, we, we could look kind of the same dates that Wednesday, Wednesday seemed to be a clear day for me anyway, but we can look either later on this month, or we can start in March. But it may be good to, I don't think it really matters, either way.
Just to be clear, the, the 10th is not happening, though?
No, we, that meeting's still going forward. Right, I think I indicated in email to Michelle, you would just note that that meeting is gonna go forward, that's gonna set the first meeting for this Subcommittee. And then that's where they would elect a chair, and from there, we can establish a, a regular meeting calendar.
Right, so I think, I think what we talked about is the members of this commission who are interested in being on the Subcommittee will meet on the 10th as a Subcommittee. At that meeting, a chair will be elected, there will be a plan of how to invite who, who else you would like on the Subcommittee from groups outside of this commission. And then the Subcommittee will set their own meeting schedule for further meetings. Is that, are we on the same page?
That's how I understand it.
So, what is, who's, sorry, what is the substance of the discussion right now, then? Are we setting a?
I'm just overview of, okay, kind of where we're at. There's not a whole lot to discuss until we actually get a contractor on board. There's really not much we do, other than to review the existing plan.
Is everyone all set for the 10th, links are out, everything?
I believe so, I'll follow up with Jen tomorrow, and just make sure that everyone has a active link.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, that's sent out to everybody?
It'll be sent to, I think it was Kirk, Michelle, Jason. And I don't know who anyone, was it Rich, were you interested in participating in that?
I can help out, but I don't know if I want to be on another Subcommittee. But I can attend meetings or whatever.
Is it a Zoom meeting? On the 10th, or is it in person?
We can make it a Zoom meeting. I'll just have to post it, an amended agenda with the Zoom link.
I'll, I'd like to go to that, just to see what's.
So, if we can do it by Zoom, you can attend?
Yeah.
Is this for February 10th or March 10th?
February.
February. I would be interested. Nicole.
And Sue is reminding us that Olivia volunteered, and I believe Tim did as well. And I hadn't, so, so we'll make sure we get the list right.
Can we invite somebody from zoning?
I think that's what you'll all determine on the 10th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we'll send a, a meeting link out to Olivia, Tim, Jason, Kirk, Nicole, and Brian. And then from there, we will go forward. Excellent.
Powerhouse group there, I'm looking forward to getting the next update, thank you all. Any other updates from our esteemed Planning Director?
I have no other updates at this time.
Fantastic. Subcommittee is, the POCD Subcommittee did meet right before this, and I have to give a shout out to Kirk, who had a fantastic idea for a next step. We're gonna be meeting to plan a follow up workshop with all of the stakeholders that we had gotten involved in the project as we were beginning to write the POCD and talk about how we can work together now that we're in the implementation phase. So, looking forward to that. That meeting is set for next Wednesday, February 16th at Town Hall. If anyone wants to attend, you're more than welcome to listen in and provide ideas. And then, at that meeting, we will set a time for the stakeholder workshop. Any questions on that or other POCD related items? Okay. And Chairman's report, I don't have anything specific, but I know there is one thing that I owe this group an update on, and that was Kevin Siri had mentioned to us the potential of town providing town email addresses for commission members so that we can do exactly what Attorney's Amarko was just advising us to do, which was use town run technology for our town communications. And I do not have an update on that, but I will work to get one prior to the next meeting, or if something occurs, I am sure that Gary and Jen will let us know so that people who are interested in that can take advantage of it.
Yeah, I'll be happy to get more information on that in my discussions with Kevin. I think it's, there's a small fee of something like $8 pays for the email address. I can talk with him as well and get that information to the commission.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have the approval of our regular meeting minutes from January 25th, 2022. So, our motion on the table.
This is Kirk.
Okay, Kirk, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Jason.
Um, I feel like I can make an amendment.
Yep, we'll open for discussion now, go, go for it, Rich.
Sure, I just found out on the, I guess, second page, whereas Gary informed the members of the zoning commission has scheduled a public hearing for the amendment on February 3rd on top of page two. I think she's read March 3rd. Just that when the public hearing is.
My understanding that public hearing was actually set for February 17th next week.
Okay.
Okay.
So, under, I think under all, I'm sorry, yeah, so I would just maybe change that from 3 to 17.
Thank you. And then I had a note. No, I didn't. Oh, yes, I did. The very top, it says Eastlime Planning Commission Special Meeting. This one actually was our regular meeting, our special meeting was earlier in the month. So, if we could make that change, just right on the heading. Any other discussion items?
I, I have a question about the previous point, I'm looking at a, a letter from, from zoning that Anthurlo sent. And it says March 3rd, 2022, for that public hearing.
So, I guess we're looking at what Gary, you relayed to us during the meeting. It may have changed since then, but we, the minutes should reflect what was relayed, correct?
Yeah, the minute should reflect the, what was said. If we missed, stated the date, according to the actual text amendment proposal that we have the referral, the public hearing is set for March 3rd.
Okay. So, back to that point.
So, I think Rich was correct, March 3rd, so we'll change on the minutes. We should reflect the change there.
That was, that was the center of the meeting, I believe.
Yep. Sue, are you good with that, under zoning referrals, a March 3rd? I'm sure she is, she's great at this. Okay, any other notes? So, we've had some changes. Do we move to approve as amended? Kirk?
Move to approve as amended?
I think Jason was our second.
Nice, nice, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call vote, since we're on Zoom, Brian Bonbeck.
Aye.
Kirk Scott.
Aye.
Rich Gordon.
Aye.
Nicole Davison.
abstain.
Jason Deebol.
Aye.
And Michelle Williams, aye. Thank you for your time on that. Toggling back to the agenda here on my screen. We do not have any public hearings tonight, nor do we have any subdivisions, but we can jump right into the zoning referral, that was just the topic of our minutes discussion, which is a request of AMG Pub 2 LLC for a text amendment to the Eastlime zoning regulations, section 20 dot 26, to amend the distance between drive through facilities within the CA district. We did have some materials on this posted online, I don't know if everybody got a chance to take a look.
I would share my screen, but it's not, my camera's not working, so if you're able to access the document.
I can also share my screen if we want, I have the I can also share my screen if we want. I have the actual request for the tax amendment. And then also I believe your memo. If others would like to see it, don't hesitate if we have questions. Would you like me to share the screen?
You, you can. I'm happy to kind of go through my memo. I think it explains an overview of what the proposal is. AMG Pub 2 LLC. They're looking to propose a text amendment to section 20 point 26 subsection L, which currently requires that no restaurant or food service establishment with a drive-through facility shall be built or established upon a lot or premises within a radius of 1,000 feet of any part of any other building, lot, or premises used for such purpose. They want to replace that with the following is, is that no restaurant or food service establishment with a drive-through facility shall be built or established upon a lot or premises as follows, within a radius of 1,000 feet of any part of any other building, lot, or premises, when the proposed location is within 1,000 feet of Interstate I-95 non-access line. Well, my first question there is where is that? Where does that fall on the map? There's no map here to suggest where that may be. Obviously, we can, if I had more time, we could, we could dive a little deeper into that. Second, they want to add no driveway serving, a drive-through facility shall be closer than 250 feet from another drive-through facility as measured between the center line of the nearest driveway serving the drive-through facility when outside the 1,000-foot radius of the Interstate I-95 non-access line. And third, that the existing premises used for such purposes prior to this regulation should not be deemed a non-conforming. So the change they're saying here that with this change, it wouldn't take existing drive-through facilities that may or would become non-conforming. In this case, it wouldn't. So I, I took a look through the P O C D sections eight, two regarding the commercial zone, really hammer on curb cuts. So reducing the number of curb cuts on a major thoroughfares, particularly Route 1, Route 161 and Route 156. Also encouraging shared drive-through accesses between lots is what we're encouraging to reduce the number of curb cuts out onto the main thoroughfares. There's nothing specific about drive-through facilities and how they may impact or not the local area traffic. My suggestion here is recommend the zoning commission consult the traffic engineer or the Institute of Transportation Engineers to assess the potential impact of the proposed regulation change on the local area traffic circulation. And as with any drive-through facility, I would require that be a special permit. Obviously requiring a traffic study as well with that application would be a good idea. And I also think that they should, you know, the applicant should be on the hook to demonstrate that the facility will not adversely impact the interior circulation within the parking lot or on the local road. You know, I use language no more than a minimal impact. Again, maybe it could be no impact. That's the zoning commission's discretion. But those are things that I certainly would recommend. They at least consider if they do adopt this thing. So I'm not certain that it's 100% consistent or inconsistent with the P O C D. But certainly as they, they evaluate it, I would think they want to keep in mind curb cuts and how, you know, the circulation with these drive-through facilities. I mean, I can think of one particular in town approximate to I-95. And if you notice, the DOT has closed off one of those curb cuts mainly because it was a, it's on the corner of King Arthur and Route 161 at the highway on and off ramps. So that facility, they shut it down, it, it just because it's problematic. So I would hope zoning will, will keep those things in mind as they consider this regulation. I leave it to you to make the final determination.
As we start discussion on this, just to set the framework, I want to remind everyone that our charge here is to determine whether or not this does or does, is or is not consistent with the plan of conservation and development. And I also want to remind us all that we are, it doesn't, for our purposes, the applicant is not a factor. We're talking about a regulation change. So I don't want to get into specific examples of, you know, who's applying and what could it be? Well, if it's this, it's this, we're looking at the letter of the regulations, so it would apply across the board. Just to remind everyone as we move forward, because we haven't done one of these in a little while. We have some new numbers. So I'd like to open up the floor for questions or discussion.
I have a, Gary, Brian, just on that K two there, there's, it looks like a typo. Doesn't say thousand foot, says zero.
Yes, that, that's correct. That's a typo. It should say 1,000.
And so it, it seems like those are good recommendations. And if proved, you know, that there's no impact to the traffic. Then it would, you know, at that point, would we force this traffic? How does this work? Do we, would we force or recommend this traffic study? And then upon the results of that, determine if it's consistent or inconsistent with the P O C D? Is that how that would work?
No, so, so we're, we're looking at the proposed reg change and just saying if they, if, if this regulation was to change, would it be consistent with the plan of development? And understanding that this change would affect all properties within the C A commercial zoning district. And so that this change takes effect, anyone applying for a, a restaurant or a premise with a drive-through facility would be subject to this regulation. We wouldn't, the planning commission would not get a second crack at it and say, okay, it's consistent or inconsistent. Once we determine that it is or it isn't.
If, yeah. So, but, but yes, but it's kind of a catch 22, right? We were limiting curb cuts. You know, and that's in the P O C D. So it, on its face, it would seem this is inconsistent. But if they could prove via traffic study that wasn't going to impact anything, then perhaps it might be, you know, consistent. You see what I'm saying? Or am I missing something here? It's, it's almost like a, a catch 22.
A little bit. I think I understand if I, if I'm clear is that the way it's proposed would be inconsistent because in that it, it's not addressing the potential traffic impact.
Okay, yep, I agree with that. Yep.
Whereas if they added a caveat here that said, hey, well, of food service establishments where the drive-through shall submit or demonstrate no impact on local area roads or a minimal impact as a criteria, that would be more consistent with the plan, I would think anyway, or at least the overall transportation circulation plan and the plan of development. Right? Because we're also, while we may point out curb cuts and reducing them, we're certainly concerned about traffic congestion as a result of queues from a drive-through facility backing out onto the road. So, yeah, I would, you know, my, my initial thoughts here is this is more inconsistent than it is consistent because it lacks those elements.
Right. For the purpose of this meeting, we're to determine if it's consistent or inconsistent. And then based on that decision, we put recommendations after that, I guess.
We can. That's just an example in my memo that, you know, the commission can add any commentary that they'd like to add on to that determination or the zoning commission's consideration.
And Brian, we've done this before a couple of times, or there have been some other proposed regulations that just aren't really addressed in the P O C D. Or, you know, the proposal is consistent with some parts and is inconsistent with other parts of the P O C D. So this is the situation we find ourselves in from time to time.
Yeah, I mean, from my humble opinion, it just seems like it's some, you know, it, it would be inconsistent, but.
Well, let's get to some of the other members here and.
Absolutely.
Thank you. No. Nicole?
Yes, I just, I don't understand the I-95 non-access line. I don't understand what that means exactly. Is there a definition or if someone could explain that?
The best I can explain that is that there's a the end of the non-access line is basically it's an area of the highway right away that, that you can't access. You, the public is not, well, it is a public thoroughfare. You just can't go there and hang out and have a picnic, a build a building. So it's a non-access area that runs parallel with the highway. Again, how wide that is in any one area, I don't know, because we don't have a map that depicts it. They didn't supply us with one. Certainly I can point to the, the G I S map that's online and the assessor's data. But certainly, you know, that's, that's not my opinion of survey grade work. So as this may have some significant impact to our commercial zone, I think a more precise map would be warranted so that we can fully examine what type of impact it's going to have, what lots it's going to affect.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would also, I would also note that it would be hard to kind of police because as these establishments, restaurants close and open, they're going to move. And I think that's going to be a tough one for zoning to, to track, you know, and do they fall within the 1,000 feet or not? As it stands now, it's just, are you within 1,000 feet of any building or any other premise that has a drive-through? It's pretty straightforward, pretty simple. That's all I have.
Go ahead, Kirk.
I know you saw my mute come off about four times. So, yeah, I mean, I think the original intent of the, the amendment as it's written now is to maintain some kind of community character, right? Like, I don't think, I think what they had in mind when they put this together initially was, we don't want 161 to be like Hamburger Hill in Groton, where there's a drive-through after drive-through after drive-through. I, if I'm understanding what's already in place. So that's one thought. The other thought that I had was that regardless of whether we say that they, we want to have this text amendment approved or disapproved or whatever, regardless of that, it seems like, and Gary, you can help me understand this. It seems like there's already a path for them now without this text amendment, and that would be through the Z B A. Is that true?
Um, well, they would have to, if they went to Z B A, they'd have to demonstrate that there's a hardship of some sort unique to that parcel of land that they're interested in. And, and if they were able to demonstrate that, the zoning board of appeals could grant them a variance for a drive-through. I think that's.
That's been done before, right? I mean.
I, that I don't know if that's been done. If a variance has been issued for a drive-through in this town, I, I would have to check with Bill. But let's just say in, in order for the applicant to exhaust their municipal remedies, that is one way to go before applying for a reg change. It's an option, although not required, right? Because anyone can apply for a regulation change of the zoning regs.
And somebody who has a P O C D or something handy, what section do we talk about community character and like preserving the way? I mean, because that, that is one of the, one of the goals of the P O C D is to maintain some maintain a certain community character. And I feel like this change would, would change 161 from a you know, light industrial kind of place to more of a fast food row.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We, this is an area where in the C A zone right there in particular, that we don't have a lot of character recommendations. We focus them kind of in that Boston Post Road area and then also in the Main Street area.
Okay.
I'm going to pull this up and check while we continue the discussion.
Yeah, I'm looking at the P O C D and the, under economic development and also chapter eight, the commercial and industrial development. I would note that under chapter 9.2.2 Flanders Village, where the C A zone primarily exists, we do indicate that the area is dominated by sprawled residential subdivision and strip development patterns, which create an auto-centric community. Flanders Four Corners will never be a quaint, quote, "New England downtown is recommended by Smart Growth Print will without complete overhaul and approach that isn't practical, et cetera." So I think it starts to speak to that community character. Where we, we get into suggesting we provide opportunity to create a new downtown that, that really focuses on pedestrian needs. And walkability.
So that's. Page 71, if anyone's following along.
We also say we want to promote economic development too. So I mean, that, that would be, or could be a point in the favor of approving this.
Yep. And building out the commercial zone with commercial uses.
Yeah.
Jason, I know we've been needing to get to you.
Someone already made my point for me. I, I'm curious though, where walkability would factor in this because clearly if you're walking, you don't need a drive-through. So I'm looking through the, the document now to kind of make sense of that.
Yeah, I think that would be the page 71.
Yeah, I, I would say that, that's an inconsistency. Drive-throughs don't promote walkability.
Right, but you could walk up to one of these restaurants too. I mean, there's it's not an exclusively auto-centric thing. We would probably walk through the front door like a Dunkin' Donuts or something. Most of them have, most of them aren't just drive-throughs, right?
Yeah, there's.
I think, I, I don't think it would hurt walkability too much. Would it?
I, I don't think so. I, I mean, again, you know, how many of these would pop up once this regulation passes? I, I don't know. You know, how many could the, the town theoretically get, you know, how many could be established within the town following these guidelines? I don't know. I'd be interested. And, and would that again, have any impact on the local area roads? If the internal site traffic is handled properly, my opinion is no, there would be no, theoretically, there should be no impact to the local area roads other than the traffic generated by that new establishment. So if you take an existing establishment, which we have many in our commercial zones, more of a redevelopment type thing going on. And so you change a use, maybe an office use to a restaurant use, well, you've just increased the traffic generation. So that's something I think, you know, zoning would look at, and that would come as part of any traffic study with the site development plan.
So another thing to think about, I know that especially with fast food restaurants, but I guess all drive-throughs, there is a, a certain issue of litter accumulation. I, I know that stores are supposed to, you know, dictate when they empty their trash, but the trash around fast food restaurants, drive-throughs tend to be jam-packed with things spilling all over the place. And, you know, that attracts seagulls and other pests. Also, the idea of an increase in these things might affect air quality as you have all these vehicles idling around a building. If we make several of them up and down 161 hamburger hill scenario. I mean, I, I would like to know more about how that would impact the, the breathability of the Flanders area. You know what I mean? Like, is it a significant impact or is that just kind of a, a fever dream I'm having?
Rich, we haven't heard from you yet tonight on this. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, I'm just, I agree, it's not really consistent with the P O C D, but I kind of agree with Gary if they use those caveats and get somebody to traffic, basically, I think traffic is the main, the main issue here. And, uh, if you have somebody, a traffic individual. They can responsibly address the traffic issue, somebody to review the, uh. Specific, uh, issues and. And it becomes more more consistent, I think. The general restaurant procedure, I guess you you could say is inconsistent, but I don't know how we address it with. Caveats, maybe that would. Limit the inconsistency.
How are we feeling if we were to do a quick poll right now? It seems that. Uh, whether we find it consistent or inconsistent, we do have some findings and. Uh, parts of the P O C D that we'd like to point out or recommendations that we'd like to make to zoning. However, for the initial finding it consistent or inconsistent. Can I go around the screen and kind of see where people are landing? I guess I'll go kind of in the order of how we commented, so I'll start with Brian.
I feel it's inconsistent right now.
Okay. Nicole.
I for the, I think it's inconsistent, however, I do believe that. If depending on the traffic study, it may be consistent. It's possible.
Kirk.
I think it's both consistent and inconsistent. Uh, the traffic. Concerns in the exhaust fumes and all that stuff, I think tho- those are points to the inconsistent, but. You know, when you think about. Adding business and promoting business in town, in that case, it's consistent, so I'm next. I I don't know. Sorry.
No, this, what this is for, and Jason, how about you weigh in on this?
I'm the same, uh, as as Kirk, I I. Yeah. It's, it seems like we're. Maybe using a tool here to measure something it wasn't designed to measure.
Yeah, sometimes we come across that. Rich, where do you think you sit here?
I'd say the way it's addressed, it's more consistent than consistent. Was that?
I missed it a little.
I'm sorry, more more inconsistent than consistent, so if I had to choose one or the other, it's inconsistent.
I think I can think of one instance where we have said it is both consistent and inconsistent on one of these things. I can also think of some instances where we've chosen a side and then kind of. Given a bunch of, but this in the comments. It seems like. People are kind of feeling both sides with a little more leaning toward inconsistent.
I would agree with that, and and the only other thing that I'd like to add is. There is also the zoning board of appeals, so if we did nothing, they could, they still have an avenue of. A way to push whatever their project, drive-through, restaurant business, whatever it is, there's still a way for them to get. Done what they want to get done, although it might be more expensive legally, so.
Now, Gary, remind me, this goes to the zoning commission in the form of a letter, right? So we do have some.
Correct.
Space to explain where we're coming from.
Yes.
So. Let's.
I I would think my my suggestion is maybe stating something like, you know, well. The proposed regulation would support economic development, particularly for fast food restaurants, drive-through facilities. It's inconsistent for the following reasons, in that it lacks appropriate measures to protect the town from adverse traffic impacts. It doesn't consider. You know, tho- that potential of, it also lacks a map identifying. The thousand-foot non-access line to I ninety-five and which properties that this regulation would directly affect. So I think. That may be a start. Or sufficient, if you like it.
Yeah, I would like to get that point in there about there being an existing mechanism. To the, with the ZBA as well.
Is there a reason why they're referencing I ninety-five all of a sudden so much? And I think at least two of the three points there, right?
Um, my my guess is the site that they're interested in is within a thousand feet of another building. But I'm I'm not certain. My guess is the other building, though, is is. Not within a thousand feet of I ninety-five.
Seems to be very specific towards one project rather than a general.
So it, my guess is there's a location that they're interested in that is within a thousand feet of another establishment. That is located within a thousand feet of the I ninety-five non-access line. So, again, um, if I had to use my imagination and think about the town and the map, I ninety-five where it crosses the C A zone. I can only imagine that that puts it in the area of roughly Costco, Starbucks, Motel Six, and the mobile station. I mean, that that that, those are the properties that are but, um, the, and what was the Formula Five guys now the, uh. Daddy's noodles, uh, that area directly abuts the I ninety-five corridor. So I'm thinking it's got to be somewhere in there. And then it goes on to say that it can't be any closer than two hundred fifty feet from another drive-through facility. So my guess is it's at least, uh, probably three hundred feet from the nearest drive-through. So I think going back to what Kirk said, not wanting, you know, drive-through, or was it row, if you will, or hamburger hill. Uh, with drive-through after drive-through, um, that that may be exactly why we have the regulation that we have currently in place.
I don't envy the zoning commission, I'll tell you that. But it sounds like we're on the right track for our purposes tonight. Which seems like we are leaning toward. Inconsistent as it does not. Allow for. The factoring of traffic impacts. And we do not have an accurate map of the one thousand-foot highway line. As well as the character comments on page seventy-one of the Plan of Conservation and Development. And that there is a path forward in the event that a particular business would want to. Appeal this for their own uses on a one-time basis through the zoning board of appeals. Um, I think that might be enough right there, but I know, um, Jason also mentioned. Uh, litter accumulation and I and, um, you know, litter reductions definitely covered in the P O C D. Also, the air quality impact.
There's little about air quality impact that I could see. There is some stuff about, um, overreliance on automobiles, but that, I think, applies.
Yeah.
Something other than driving.
And that, I think, would be hard for us to to make a determination on without a traffic study anyway. Because to the earlier points in the discussion, we could generate just as much traffic for a non-drive-through business as a drive-through business. In some instances.
And on the other hand.
Uh, the P O C D does support building out the commercial district to the economic development purposes of the town.
So like five things to one thing, kind of.
It seems that way. Procedurally, we've covered a lot more than is typically in a motion. I think sometimes, Gary, you've just, you've been able to capture our thoughts and we've moved on the finding. And you've been able to summarize the conversation in the letter.
Yeah, um, so if I understand correctly, it's, you know, the, if we're the route we're going is that if, uh. Someone was to make a motion that the proposed application was inconsistent because it does not factor in traffic impacts. That does not provide a map. Depicting the one thousand-foot non-highway access line. Does not account for air quality impacts, and then. There's the potential for a variance from the ZBA to exhaust all municipal remedies. And then I, my question here is your comments on page seventy-one, uh, of the P O C D, I, I think, actually support. The drive-through because it's promoting economic development.
Oh. Was the part about character and walkability and multimodal transportation. So I was kind of viewing that as a, does not support, but yes, elsewhere in the document, for sure, it would support. You know, economic development purposes behind this.
So. In regards to the comments on page seventy-one. The proposed regulation does not support. I guess multimodal transportation.
Uh, we could leave that out or not. I mean, I'm not, I don't think it's a particularly strong piece of evidence, one way or the other. I don't know what the rest of the commission. Okay, so it sounds like we can leave that one out.
But, so at the end of the one, two, three, so there's four issues here that would be problematic or inconsistent with the plan of development. Knows that doesn't count for the traffic impacts. Uh, the air quality impacts, again, no map, I mean, I think that's. And then the, the potential for a ZBA variance, um, to exhaust municipal remedies. That that's kind of a sidebar, it's not really going to be found in the P O C D.
Right, and I think the litter and the air quality aren't necessarily directly addressed in the P O C D either. They're discussed separately, but not in the context of development of the C A district.
Although I think you could, you could generalize that a bit more and just say that, you know, the environmental impact. Uh, you know. And maybe. Point to. Maybe chapter eleven, clean, reliable, sustainable energy, you know, you know, it's not necessarily. Promoting. You know, it's promoting vehicular use of the of a vehicle, so that doesn't certainly promote clean air.
I'd be fine with that.
Well, I think we have a pretty good list, right? I mean. What did we say, five points, four points?
If we landed on four plus, yeah.
I I think I really, if I eliminate the comments on page seventy-one, I've got three major points with the fourth being the ZBA. Um, and as you heard, uh, Attorney Zemarka said, in in rendering a decision on an application, let's say. Right, if if the court finds that just one of your reasons was correct, it will uphold your decision. So out of these three, so long as, think of it that way, right? So as long as one is correct, and I'm gonna bank on the traffic impacts as being the correct one. Say, you know, it doesn't assess that, it doesn't account for any of them. Yeah, that's inconsistent.
I'm comfortable with that. Um, would anyone like to make a motion? That. Summarizes, I can take a stab or happy to pass the mic. All right, I'm gonna move that we find. This, uh, zoning referral request of AMG Pub Two LLC for a text amendment to the Eastline. Zoning Regulation Section twenty dot twenty-six to amend the distance between drive-through facilities within the C A district. Inconsistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development as the proposed. Uh, regulation amendments do not allow for the consideration of traffic impacts. And do not require a traffic study. As we do not have accurate mapping of the one thousand-foot highway line or. Radius. Was it line or radius?
A line.
Line, thank you.
Is it, it is a radius. It's a, within a radius of a thousand feet of any other building. Or premise when the proposed location is within a thousand feet of the non-access line.
Okay, so we don't have the map of the non-access line, meaning we cannot determine the rest of those measurements. Um, and. There is no evaluation of the potential negative air quality impact that the. Uh, additional vehicular transportation and idling could. Provide to the town. As an aside. There is already. A mechanism by which an applicant could seek a variance for a drive-through under the current regulations. That is my motion. Would anyone like to second it?
Masterfully done, I will second it.
Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Discussion, particularly Gary, did I miss anything?
Um, so as I wrote it down, I had you moved to find. Application inconsistent with the P O C D as the proposed regulation amendment does not account for traffic impacts or require a traffic study. Nor is there a map showing the one thousand-foot non-access line and no documentation regarding. Air quality impacts. Has been provided. And as an aside, there is an existing mechanism whereby an applicant can apply for a variance. That.
That would be the ZBA.
Correct.
Okay, so this motion has been made and seconded. Rich, sorry, did, so you come off mute there?
Should we mention economic development? We don't want to go to the areas where it may be consistent, we just want, we just want to list the, uh, avenues where it is inconsistent. In the motion.
I think if we're saying inconsistent, we should back it up with supporting evidence and not. Yeah, confuse the issue. I mean, that's what the discussion kind of was for us to do, uh, to weigh these things. And, uh. I'm sure the applicant knows that. It would help develop the commercial area that they have in mind. Um, but what they perhaps don't see is what we see, which is the rest of the factors.
Kirk, were you gonna add to that?
No, I think that's, that's a good point by Jason.
All right, let's move forward to vote if there is no other discussion. I'm gonna do roll call vote. Brian Bonback. Oops.
Hi, sorry.
All good. Kirk Scott.
Hi.
Rich Gordon. Nicole Davison.
Hi.
Jason Deevil.
Hi.
And Michelle Williams, I, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for some really good discussion there. I am pulling the agenda back up here. Uh, we do not have any municipal referrals tonight. Old business, uh, we do have the Affordable Housing Plan update, but. Gary, I think you covered most of that in your update.
Correct.
Okay, so we're good there. Already got one of our new business items done with earlier in the agenda. Let's hop to the bylaws. So, uh, we did, as you recall, we had recently in twenty twenty-one. As you recall, we had recently in twenty twenty-one amended our bylaws. Uh, Jason suggested some further amendments for this group to consider, which, uh, makes the entire document. Gender neutral. I thought that was a good flag, um, that we didn't think of earlier. So everyone did receive. And it's in the materials, the new newly revised bylaws for consideration. Tonight. Any discussion on those?
I think that was a great idea.
Okay.
I agree, the changes look good.
Excellent. Do, does anyone want to move to approve the bylaws as amended?
I will move to Richard Gordon. I move to, uh, prove the bylaws as amended. I submit a motion.
The second?
Second, Nicole Davison.
Thank you both. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll go to a roll call vote. Brian Bonback.
Uh, I.
Kirk Scott.
Hi.
Rich Gordon.
Hi.
Nicole Davison.
Hi.
Jason Deevil.
Hi.
And Michelle Williams, I, another unanimous motion. Thank you all for your time, uh, reviewing those. And, uh, we discussed at our last meeting, uh, our third item of new business here, the review of subdivision regulation revisions. Gary, do you have any updates on that tonight?
Not really, just, I'm working, making those revisions into a draft and I'll get them to you. This is just a placeholder on the agenda essentially at this point. Until I complete that that draft.
Excellent. And as a reminder, if anyone has comments, please feel free to forward them over to Gary individually. This commission will get to review them, um, and they will go through, obviously, the full. Um, due process before any revisions, uh, become, you know, enacted, but. Best way is to go directly to Gary if you have thoughts on particular sections. With that. Next item on our agenda is adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Kirk.
Second, Nicole Davison.
Thank you, Nicole. I think we can probably do a, a group I on this one. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hey, any opposed? No, okay. Any abstain? Great. Well, during the eight twenty P M. Thank you all. Really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Good night.
Nice to see you.
Then there was two.
What's up, Gary?
I take my video off, it's just a black screen. My name goes away.
You turn off the recording?
Not yet, and.